Welcome everybody to the Monday, June 10th, 2024 Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agenda and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. At this moment, we'll call the meeting in order and we'll do a moment of silence of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Deb Pataca.
Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, that brings us to the review and approval of the agenda.
So move.
Move by Lassiter.
Sir.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And this brings us to items from the auditor. May I recognize Cindy?
Yes, thank you for gathering today as the canvassing board for the primary election. We do have to do it a little bit different than we did it last time because of the way the reports are laid out, because of all the different ballot styles that we have. The first thing that I have is the, I have the ballot reconciliation sheets and I'm just going to hand one down and you guys can look it over. What we did with this is we took the, from the recap sheet that the poll workers do. We took the number of voters from the poll book, the number of voters from the absentee poll book, any absentees that were received on election day, and we added that up. That should be the number of votes that were counted. We subtracted anything that we could not count, like absentees without signatures or that came in after seven on an election or even the next day. Subtracted those that did not have a ballot stamp because they cannot count because they're not official, they don't have the stamp, and any provisional ballots that may have been cast that we did not count because we found that the voter wasn't in the right precinct or maybe wasn't registered. And that gives us the total number of ballots to be counted. And then on the summary reports that we print, that is on there. So I have all of these, if you guys would like to go through them and open the results and the poll books to make sure that those numbers are verified, especially that poll book number, because the poll books have to be sealed. And then there were a couple that did not complete the recap sheet, so we weren't sure what that number from the poll book actually was that day. So if you want me to start going through them, we can go through these one at a time or we can go through the votes first and then go through that afterwards.
Go through the votes first.
Sounds like, go through the votes first.
Okay. Because we couldn't lay this out like we did in the general. You guys all have your canvas and I have the results by precinct for every race or for every contest basically that you're going to see on there. So I'm going to start with the first page, which is the Democratic Presidential Primary, and I will read the results of the unofficial results for that, for that contest.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Unless Travis wants to do it. I keep saying that, but he probably doesn't want to. So you can follow along and ensure that the whole thing is, is recorded on the canvas, which I'm not really sure how that would not be, but pray we don't find any. So for the Democratic Presidential Candidate, Williamson 11, Biden Jr. 59, Phillips 7, Perez Serrato 2. And that's on that line one, the precinct 1-1. So as you go down, you'll be able to follow along. Precinct 1-2, Williamson 8, Biden Jr. 65, Phillips 7, Perez Serrato 4. 1-3, Williamson 9, Biden Jr. 98, Phillips 5, Perez Serrato 1. Precinct 1-4, Williamson 8, Biden Jr. 70, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 1. Precinct 2-1, Williamson 0, Biden Jr. 18, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 0. 2-2, Williamson 7, Biden Jr. 65, Phillips 6, Perez Serrato 2. 2-3, Williamson 8, Biden Jr. 36, Phillips 3, Perez Serrato 2. 2-4, Williamson 9, Biden Jr. 53, Phillips 8, Perez Serrato 4. 2-5, Williamson 7, Biden Jr. 34, Phillips 4, Perez Serrato 5. 3-1, Williamson 1, Biden Jr. 23, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 1. 3-2, Williamson 32, Biden Jr. 120, Phillips 9, Perez Serrato 7.
Hold. You said 32.
I said 3-2.
Yep, but what was Williamson?
22.
Okay.
Sorry, did I say 32?
You did.
My apologies. Precinct 3-3, Williamson 11, Biden Jr. 108, Phillips 6, Perez Serrato 7. Precinct 3-4, Williamson 8, Biden Jr. 95, Phillips 7, Perez Serrato 4. Precinct 3-5, Williamson 4, Biden Jr. 60, Phillips 5, Perez Serrato 2. Precinct 4-1, Williamson 6, Biden Jr. 38, Phillips 4, Perez Serrato 7. Precinct 4-2, Williamson 14, Biden Jr. 62, Phillips 5, Perez Serrato 3. 4-3, Williamson 9, Biden Jr. 43, Phillips 9, Perez Serrato 7. 4-4, Williamson 7, Biden Jr. 43, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 3.
I got 4 for Williamson.
I cannot read today. Sorry, it is 4.
Okay.
What did I say?
7.
Oh, I picked up the next column for the percent, that's why, okay, sorry. 4-5, Williamson 3, Biden Jr. 12, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 1. 5-1, Williamson 6, Biden Jr. 38, Phillips 0, Perez Serrato 1. 5-2, Williamson 5, Biden Jr. 53, Phillips 5, Perez Serrato 2. 5-3, Williamson 11, Biden Jr. 93, Phillips 8, Perez Serrato 6. 5-4, Williamson 9, Biden Jr. 129, Phillips 3, Perez Serrato 1. 5-5, Williamson 10, Biden Jr. 110, Phillips 6, Perez Serrato 5. AW, Williamson 3, Biden Jr. 133, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 0. Precinct BE, Williamson 5, Biden Jr. 50, Phillips 5, Perez Serrato 0. CA, Williamson 5, Biden Jr. 15, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 3. CL, Williamson 5, Biden Jr. 17, Phillips 2, Perez Serrato 0. DT, Williamson 3, Biden Jr. 17, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 1. HC, Williamson 6, Biden Jr. 62, Phillips 9, Perez Serrato 2. HR, Williamson 2, Biden Jr. 32, Phillips 2, Perez Serrato 1. JS, Williamson 4, Biden Jr. 39, Phillips 0, Perez Serrato 1. KY, Williamson 0, Biden Jr. 17, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 3. NH, Williamson 0, Biden Jr. 4, Phillips 0, Perez Serrato 0.
Skipped LS, I think.
Yep, I didn't catch LS.
It's because they're not in the same order.
And I think we missed 1-5 earlier too, but I was going to wait, I was going to wait till the end.
That's because these are not in order. I-
Most of them have it.
It's the way, yeah, it's the way they print out of our system because LS, I'll go back to that one, and 1-5. Where is it? Were created later, they have a different number in our programming. And where is it?
I figured if you just went through it, then we can come back to those two.
Well, we might have to do that because I can't find 1-5. I'm missing, I'm missing it. We'll come back to LS. So we'll move on to NU.
NH. Oh, we already did NH, you're right, NU.
NU, Williamson 3, Biden Jr. 14, Phillips 5, Perez Serrato 2. QU, Williamson 0, Biden Jr. 4, Phillips 0, Perez Serrato 1. RV, Williamson 6, Biden Jr. 41, Phillips 3, Perez Serrato 2.
What about RK then? Just asking.
I think that one's down below too. I got it, we'll do RK first, then we'll move on to RV. RK, Amberholt's, well, that is the wrong one. What happened here? Got into the- My reports didn't get crisscrossed for the next race, that's what happened there. Okay. RK. RK, Williamson 0, Biden Jr. 0, Phillips 1, Perez Serrato 0. And we can do RV, Williamson 6, Biden Jr. 41, Phillips 3, Perez Serrato 2. Now you'd like SR, wouldn't you?
Yep.
All right.
Want Travis to read them, Cindy, since he has them all?
What's that?
Want Travis to read them, since he has them all?
She's reading them off the report.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'll be quiet.
Williamson 0, Biden Jr. 7, Phillips 7, or 0, Perez Serrato 0. VF, Williamson 8, Biden Jr. 52, Phillips 3, Perez Serrato 0. VB, Williamson 7, Biden Jr. 34, Phillips 4, Perez Serrato 1. WL, Williamson 4, Biden Jr. 10, Phillips 2, Perez Serrato 1. WP, Williamson 3, Biden Jr. 51, Phillips 6, Perez Serrato 2. WS, Williamson 2, Biden Jr. 1, Phillips 2, Perez Serrato 0. And then we can go back to LS. Williamson 3, Biden Jr. 10, Phillips 0, Perez Serrato 1. And 1-5, Williamson 8, Biden Jr. 131, Phillips 5, Perez Serrato 2.
One down.
And I will try and get these in order first. I forgot they print out backwards. QU, RK. This one has a few less precincts. But it's also going to be. Okay, so for Senate District 33, Senator Race, David Johnson, this is in precinct 1-1. David Johnson, 122, Kurt Voight, 142. Precinct 1-2, Johnson 160, Voight 150. Precinct 1-3, Johnson 193, Voight 261. Precinct 3-5, Johnson 164, Voight 177. Precinct 4-3, Johnson 124, Voight 150.
The same as Cindy's.
The same as ours. Something else happened.
Looking, oh.
Primary. Just when you think you have everything in the right spot, something has gone awry.
Remind me where you're at here, because-
Look pages.
Second page two. Far right.
Okay.
And we, we just read 4-3. The 124 and 150.
Yep, the next one I'm showing is DT.
Okay.
DT and JS.
I don't know how that one gets stuck in the middle of that. Okay, DT is Johnson 72, Kurt Voight 134.
Oh, I see where you're going.
This actually might be.
JS.
Going here. Kind of following the logic of this report here, I should have moved on to that other district, 2033. That did not happen.
So you're going to do all 33 and then go back and do-
I'm going to have to because that's not how my reports printed, but we'll try it. So JS, is that-
Yep.
What you guys have next?
Yeah.
Johnson 155, Voight 243.
SR.
SR, Johnson 18, Voight 23. WP, Johnson 124, Voight 207. And that should be all of that race for that contest.
You don't give us the totals?
No, I do not have totals.
Okay.
So now I'm going to go back and rearrange my reports. I apologize, this, I thought we had these all in order. And when we print it out, they did not, so 27, NU, QU. Okay, for Senate District Republican, District 27, we've got CA, Caffal 88, Wayland 80. And on the Democratic race, we have Canoyer Jr. 6, Don Foster 14. NU, Caffal 101, Wayland 68, Canoyer Jr. 8, Foster 18. QU, Caffal 34, Wayland 44. And then the Democratic race, Canoyer Jr. 4, Foster 2. That should-
Just an anth-
There you go, W.
QU, oops, W. WL and WS.
WL and WS.
Got it. Okay. So Republican, Caffal 58, Wayland 73, Canoyer Jr. 9, Foster 12. WS, Caffal 18, Wayland 20, Canoyer Jr. 5, Foster 3.
Cindy, were there any recounts asked for?
They can't ask for a recount until after the canvas. They have three days after the canvas.
Okay.
So now we will go to District 30. So we're going to have HC, HR, KY, LS.
District 30, right?
Yep.
Okay.
First one we have is HC, Cindy.
RK. And VF, okay. Senate, yes, for Senate District 30, Halls 214, Foster 52, Fry Mueller 134. HR, Halls 156, Foster 43, Fry Mueller 196. KY, Halls 77, Foster 15, Fry Mueller 66. LS, Halls 44, Foster 18, Fry Mueller 50. RK, Halls 4, Foster 2, Fry Mueller 7. VF, Halls 104, Foster 47, Fry Mueller 171. Okay. Now, before I take off into the next one, I'll do a little double checking where we're at, precinct numbers here. Wrong. Okay. Okay, I'm going to go, these should be in precinct order. So if we do 1-4, we're going to be reading Senate District 35. And then when we get down to 3-2, we'll switch over to the Senate District 34.
Okay.
Following how that's going.
Okay.
Okay, so precinct 1-4, Republican Senator District 35. Blanc 134, Newpen 10, Walsh 70.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Sorry. Amber Holtz, I thought won, didn't she win?
This is only Pennington County results.
Okay.
That one crosses into-
Okay, that's what I was like.
All River and Custer.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's kind of confusing. Wow, so they have to vote in two different counties or?
Three.
Three.
Custer, Upfald River, and Pennington.
Yeah, I didn't know that. So when all three of those are combined, then yes, she did win.
Wow.
Precinct 2-2, again Senate District 35. Blanc 175, Newpen 21, Walsh 100. 2-3, Blanc 70, Newpen 6, Walsh 25. 3-2, State Senator District 34. Green 285, Howard 327. Precinct 3-3, Green 329, Howard 297. Precinct 3-4, Green 277, Howard 280. 4-5, go back to State Senator District 35. Blanc 68, Newpen 8, Walsh 22. 5-1, Senator District 34, Green 46, Howard 52. Precinct 5-2, Green 97, Howard 105. 5-3, Green 136, Howard 145. 5-5, Green 303, Howard 281. AW, back to Senate District 35. Blanc 137, Newpen 10, Walsh 178. BE, Blanc 131, Newpen 16, Walsh 155. CL, back to Senate District 34. Green 91, Howard 111. Back to District 35. NH, Blanc 10, Newpen 1, Walsh 11. Precinct RV, Blanc 123, Newpen 19, Walsh 68. Precinct VB, Blanc 125, Newpen 21, Walsh 63. These are hopefully in that same exact order here. So we'll start with 1-1, or 1-5, excuse me, which is the state representative for District 32. And of course, they're not in order. Here's 1-5. 1-5, Duffy 249, James 136, Kaufman 187. 2-1, Duffy 22, James 14, Kaufman 22. 2-4, Duffy 77, James 69, Kaufman 72. 2-5, Duffy 87, James 74, Kaufman 76. 3-1, Duffy 32, James 40, Kaufman 32. 4-1, Duffy 67, James 45, Kaufman 41. 4-2, Duffy 99, James 76, Kaufman 77. 4-4, Duffy 56, James 39, Kaufman 41. 5-4, Duffy 181, James 103, Kaufman 151. Then to Representative District 30. Precinct HC, Baumann 123, Smith 80, Ladner 191, Saint 22, Goodwin 250, Mon 430. HR, Baumann 143, Smith 182, Ladner 159, Saint 22, Goodwin 175, Mon 432. KY, Baumann 36, Smith 55, Ladner 58, Saint 8, Goodwin 101, Mon 415. VF, Baumann 150, Smith 170, Ladner 87, Saint 22, Goodwin 101, Mon 433.
So what happened to LS and K, RK?
Sorry. LS. Baumann 49, Smith 54, Ladner 41, Saint 11, Goodwin 41, Mon 49. And RK, Baumann 4, Smith 9, Ladner 4, Saint 2, Goodwin 1, Mon 45. State Representative District 34. Precinct 3-2, Baxter 348, Derby 362, Drury 274. Precinct 3-3, Baxter 360, Derby 378, Drury 270. 3-4, Baxter 306, Derby 326, Drury 256. 5-1, Baxter 51, Derby 50, Drury 48. 5-2, Baxter 109, Derby 113, Drury 95. 5-3, Baxter 170, Derby 170, Drury 112. 5-5, Baxter 296, Derby 353, Drury 284. CL, Baxter 126, Derby 112, Drury 76. Hopefully, these are in the right order for us. This is the commissioner of both races, we've got Commission 1 and 4. Precinct-
How about 2 and 4?
2 and 4? That would probably be more clear, wouldn't it? Precinct, or Commission District 2 and 4. So Commission District 2, Precinct 1-4, Wyffenbach 163, La Croix 56. 2-2, Wyffenbach 192, La Croix 93. 4-1, Wyffenbach 66, La Croix 39. 4-2, Wyffenbach 105, La Croix 58. 4-3, Wyffenbach 188, La Croix 79. 4-4, Wyffenbach 53, La Croix 33. Precinct 4-5, Wyffenbach 53, La Croix 39. I'm going to find NH and, well, no, we'll keep going with AW. So we're going to Commission District 4. Trask 62, Der 162, Hanson 70. BE, Trask 91, Der 125, Hanson 75. CA, Trask 92, Der 63, Hanson 32. And we'll go to NH, which is the Commission District 2.
Wait, LS.
I am missing it now, LS. Well, I might have to set this aside and have someone reprint. And nobody else is going to know how to do it because no one else knows how to run that. Um, let's just finish this one, and then we can actually open the unofficial results and find them for those.
Yes.
That's okay, so, we'll go to NH, which is Commission District 2 again. Wyffenbach 15, La Croix 7. Then to Commission District 4. NU precinct, Trask 95, Der 58, Hanson 39. Trask 63, Der 13, Hanson 34. RV, Trask 61, Der 80, Hanson 50. For some reason, SR didn't print either. VF, again for Commission District 4. Trask 87, Der 133, Hanson 62. VB, Trask 58, Der 96, Hanson 44. WL, Trask 81, Der 13, Hanson 67. WS, Trask 36, Der 3, Hanson 9.
Did we do a District 2, RV?
No. Oh, yeah, RV?
RV, yes.
We did.
SR or LS?
NH, yep.
Or SR.
Or SR, excuse me.
Yeah, SR and LS was what we got.
I'm gonna open the official reports that I brought down for LS and SR.
Where's SR? Where's SR at? SR, do you?
It's SR District 2, to the left. Oh.
Oh, Sturgis Road, okay. That's what your question was, that was like.
We went through these reports so many times, getting them split together, and still missed.
What's RK?
It's not on the sheet, but what's RK?
RK, Buckerville?
Which one's that one?
Okay, this is LS. So, for LS. Commission District 4. Trask 41, Der 44, Hanson 21. And SR, Commission District 2. Wyffenbach 32, La Croix 6. That should cover that race.
There we did NH.
Yeah.
District 2?
Yeah.
I didn't see it, but, okay. They got stuck in the next folder. That's why they were in there. Okay. This is for the state convention, the delegates to state convention. 1-1, Legere 94, Jensen 170, Santana 98. McPhillips 107. 1-2, Legere 133, Jensen 213, Santana 135. McPhillips 126, 1-3. Legere 163, Jensen 263, Santana 186. McPhillips 185, 1-4. Legere 77, Jensen 135, Santana 71, McPhillips 79. Gotta go back and find 1-5. Legere 141, Jensen 210, Santana 164. McPhillips 157. 2-1, Legere 11, Jensen 20, Santana 11. McPhillips 20. 2-2, Legere 100. Jensen 165, Santana 120. McPhillips 111. 2-3, Legere 34, Jensen 65, Santana 39. McPhillips 43. 2-4, Legere 44, Jensen 80. Santana 57, McPhillips 64. 2-5, Legere 56, Jensen 100, Santana 72. McPhillips 72. 3-1, Legere 23, Jensen 43, Santana 41. McPhillips 36. 3-2, Legere 165, Jensen 298. Santana 224, McPhillips 206. 3-3, Legere 195, Jensen 280. Santana 242, McPhillips 220. 3-4, Legere 176, Jensen 245. Santana 230, McPhillips 201. 3-5, Legere 134, Jensen 205. Santana 142, McPhillips 132. 4-1, Legere 35, Jensen 64. Santana 49, McPhillips 47. 4-2, Legere 49, Jensen 106. Santana 63, McPhillips 72. 4-3, Legere 94, Jensen 165, Santana 110. McPhillips 114. 4-4. Legere 35, Jensen 58, Santana 37, McPhillips 40. 4-5, Legere 23, Jensen 62. Santana 35, McPhillips 32. 5-1. Legere 38, Jensen 55, Santana 43, McPhillips 39. 5-2, Legere 57, Jensen 107. Santana 67, McPhillips 78.
Can you do Jensen again?
104 for Jensen. 104 for Jensen.
Yes, that is correct, 104. 57, 104, 67, and 78. Sorry, meltdown. 5-3. Legere 110, Jensen 161. Santana 116. McPhillips 105. 5-4, Legere 106, Jensen 109. Santana 100, McPhillips 124. 5-5, Legere 194. Jensen 269. Santana 254. McPhillips 221. AW, Legere 145, Jensen 169. Santana 118, McPhillips 128. BE, Legere 109, Jensen 182. Santana 124. McPhillips 133. CA, Legere 58, Jensen 108. Santana 64. McPhillips 70. CL, Legere 82, Jensen 118. Santana 78, McPhillips 80.
Hey, Jensen, you say 118 or 119?
119.
Okay.
DT, Legere 77, Jensen 134. Santana 113, McPhillips 90. HC, Legere 91, Jensen 131. Santana 103, McPhillips 95. Let's find S. Oops. HR, Legere 136, Jensen 215. Santana 152. McPhillips 155. JS, Legere 152. Jensen 244, Santana 172. McPhillips 161. KY, Legere 35, Jensen 59. Santana 58, McPhillips 38. Let's see if I can find LS here. LS. Legere 38, Jensen 59, Santana 32. McPhillips 40. NH, Legere 3, Jensen 17, Santana 8, McPhillips 15. NU, Legere 45, Jensen 102. Santana 61, McPhillips 61. QU, Legere 21, Jensen 40, Santana 31. McPhillips 29. RK. Legere 6, Jensen 8, Santana 5, McPhillips 3. RV, Legere 84, Jensen 121, Santana 77, McPhillips 77. S-Order. Legere 10, Jensen 30, Santana 18, McPhillips 12. VF, Legere 106, Jensen 164. Santana 123, McPhillips 87. VB, Legere 74, Jensen 141, Santana 68. McPhillips 81. WL, Legere 41, Jensen 59, Santana 51. McPhillips 54. WP, Legere 123. Jensen 203, Santana 141. McPhillips 153. WS, Legere 17, Jensen 17. Santana 17, McPhillips 12. This next one covers the Committee People, 1-3, 1-5, 2-5, and 3-2. We'll start with 1-3. Gosh, 209. 209, Houghton 192. 2-5, Hodick 49, West 78. 3-2, Hiles 159, Derby 394.
1-5?
I'm never gonna get these in the right order. 1-5, Peterson 86, Richter 158. Okay, the next one is precinct 3, um, Committee Man 3-3, 3-5, 4-3, and 4-4. 3-3, Schmidt 232. Maher 249. 3-5, Mills 131. Partridge 144. 4-3, La Croix 115. How did you pronounce that, Dana? Pustojewski? 135. That one is rather hard to say, sorry. 4-4, to close, 45. Harvey 24. Committee Man 5-4, JS, KY, and VF. 5-4, Ward 119. Konsett 96. JS, Johnson 166. Sazma 36. Wagner 157. KY, Goodwin 122, Delfino 34. VF, Jangula 89. Frizzell 130. And then Committee Man for WP. Way 99, Woods 129. Precinct Committee Women. 1-3, 2-5, 3-2, and 3-3. 1-3, Gosh 171. Houghton 228. 2-5, Seacrest 66. Hodick 70. 3-2, Breed 159, Drury 371. 3-3, Aberesk 252, Maher 230. Again, Committee Women, 3-5, 4-1, 5-2, and 5-4. 3-5, Mills 114, Partridge 157. 4-1, McNamara 45, Bart 36. 5-2, Roden 72, Kaiser 57. 5-4. Kaufman 118, Konsett 68, Ward 60. Committee Women, JS, KY, VB, and WP. JS, Wagner 214. Johnson 122. KY, Delfino 36. Goodwin 101. VB, Christensen 77. Campbell 95. WP, Woods 118. Marlette 114. Custer School Board and the Hill City School Board, so I have, um, this should run, hopefully, all run across. On the Custer School District, NHC. There were no votes cast for anybody in that school district race. Hill City School District. Rapp 313, Street 164, Ronish 265. HR, Hill City School District. Rapp 12, Street 4, Ronish 9. JS, Rapp 26, Street 34, Ronish 25. KY. Custer School District. Pryor 15, Rendell 20. Barnes 27. Hill City School District. Rapp 90, Street 33, Ronish 44. LS. Custer School District. Pryor 2, Rendell 2, Barnes 3. Rapid City School Board. Let's see if I can find LS to get it in the right place before I start. Rapid City Area School Board. Area 1. Moore 200. Bedal 144. Precinct 1-2, Moore 257, Bedal 158. Precinct 1-3, Moore 366, Bedal 218. Area 7. Precinct 1-4. Thomas 89, Urban 226.
I got 225.
Maybe I can't read.
225. What'd you say?
226. It does say 226 on here.
I got 225.
Yeah, 225. Um, Precinct 1-4. For Kimmy Urban. Pardon? Um. But that should've went into the, to the, I mean, canvas that you printed, shouldn't it?
Do we need to open?
Do you wanna run check that?
We're showing 225, she read off 226. Most of the tape.
I wonder if that is the provisional, 'cause I know it was a school board one. And I wonder if it just didn't get transferred into that canvas.
Probably not.
You'll have to rerun the, rerun the canvas.
Okay.
So. Now I lost all 12.
Precinct 2-2.
2-2, thank you.
1-5, actually.
Oh, I was gonna say, I have 1-5 in front of me.
Oh, yeah, Jesus.
Precinct 1-5, so this is school board area 1. Moore 325, Bedal 221. 2-2, Area 7. Thomas 61, Urban 119. 2-3, but, um, Area 1, Moore 3, Bedal 0. Area 7, Thomas 21. Urban 34. 2-5, Moore 34, Bedal 23. 3-1, Moore 12, Bedal 2. AW. Area 7, Thomas 182, Urban 120. BE, Thomas 9, Urban 21. CA. Thomas 52, Urban 36. L-MS. Thomas 61, Urban 63. NH, 2, Urban 3. RV, Thomas 94, Urban 166. VF, 129, Urban 251. VB, Thomas 36, Urban 49. And I will set that one aside until she comes back down with that.
So Cindy, on that one, you had one vote more than what showed on our sheets.
Yes.
So that was, but, between, in your discussion, it sounded like that was a vote that shouldn't have been counted, is that?
It actually was a provisional ballot that should have counted, and so we did count it. It just seems like it did not get in the canvas.
Okay. So when we get the correct numbers, we're gonna have two twenty-six.
You should have, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, if we move on to the Hill City Mayor race, which is just precinct HC, Doty one twenty-three, Nichols one thirty.
I don't have that one. That's the last one I have.
Turn them back. Well, I will give you mine because I have what I need. So it was one twenty-three and thirty on that one. And then on the Hill City, their alderman race, Ward one and two. I got, um, I don't wanna read from the canvas. Theory seventy-four, Jarvis seventy-two, that's Ward one. Ward two, Seibert sixteen, Johnson thirty-five. Okay, I need a drink.
Cindy, can I ask a question? When you have runoffs, usually how many votes have you ever had on a runoff that's been mistaken?
Yes, recount, not runoff, yeah. Inside being around is probably. Two? Three, maybe? It's, it's never very many.
Yeah.
I think the last one, there was zero, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, the last one was zero.
The la, yeah, the last one, we did three recounts and there was nothing.
Yep.
So.
Yep, I remember that.
The most I've seen was six, and that was my race for District thirty.
That might have been.
But that was before the machines picked up the stamp.
Oh, good.
Cuz they removed several of them because the stamps had gotten, the non-stamps. If you don't mind, I was gonna ask a question about that. Cuz you said we can't, we have to do this before we do any recounts that may come. I thought the recounts had to come first before we.
Before the canvas? No.
Yeah, okay, so the canvas comes and then the potential for the recounts.
Anybody that's gonna file at the county level has to file within three days of the county canvas.
Gotcha, okay.
So Cindy, are there any automatic recounts?
No, they have to file.
They have to file.
Yep, yep. And I think there were a few that were pretty close, I don't know if they'll actually file or not. So, I'm just gonna suck that mess.
Well, even the Hill City Mayor's race was pretty close.
I know, yeah.
I think that was the closest one, wasn't it?
It could've been.
It was like two.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay.
I think so.
Alderman was within two-two.
Oh, was it?
Was there one? There was some pretty close races, there, yeah.
I saw one post about a race, and they were saying, look how close it is, it's one vote, but they only took one precinct out of it to show that there was one vote. But if you looked at the, if you looked at all the precincts, it was, it was a pretty even win, but they just showed one of the precinct races, and it was one vote. And I was like, they were trying to dust up some controversy. I could tell.
So, as I was saying, I did go through, we did go through and do the ballot reconciliation. So if you guys would like to open all the poll books and verify these numbers, to make sure that you feel that the number of ballots that we counted was correct. I will say that, you know, going through the ballot recap sheets, um, I don't know how many times we've redone that ballot recap, even at the state level. And it just is something that just must be hard at the end of the night, when everybody's tired and they're trying to count the leftover ballots to calculate how many votes we should have. That just seems to be a, um, one of those things that we stumble with at the end of the night.
Did we take on more people or something this year? Is that why it was slower this year?
Pardon?
Cindy, did we take on more people, or why was it slower this year?
We didn't start counting our absentees until later in the evening. We started about a quarter to eight, counting our absentees. So that's why usually we try and get those done during the day, but we did have a couple delays there, so we didn't start until a quarter to eight counting those.
That's what held it up till that late?
Yep. And then we also had ballots that were getting kicked out because people don't know how to fill in an oval. So the machine kicks it out, and then we have to take it to the resolution board, and they recreated it. So that was also very time-consuming for the resolution boards.
Did you have a bunch of those?
I don't know how many there were, I don't, I'm not out there during that, I'm working the reporting side of it. But I know there were almost some every precinct, I think. Sometimes it's better than others.
You know, you talk about that filling in the oval, even with the hand counting. I was watching them, and they were hand counting, but even when the ovals weren't filled in completely, they were asking the resolution board after about four or five of them, they said, look, if it's clear that even though they didn't fill it completely in, if they didn't fill it completely in, uh, you know, you should count it unless there's something that's, you know, drawing your attention, that maybe they put an X on it, or something of that nature. So it was kinda interesting that even the human side of it was looking at it, well, they didn't fill it all the way in.
Yep, yep. What it says is to fill in the oval. Even change the directions and administrative rule, cuz on the instructions that used to show you, you know, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this, do this. We said take out the don't, because that's what people see first, and I just posed to it. And evidently that, we just have the right way on those instructions now, but evidently that still didn't quite make it clear. Do you guys wanna go through these? Are you satisfied that we counted the number of ballots we should? Um, I do definitely need to open at least two of them, because we didn't have anything on the recap sheet.
I'm opening it.
I'm gonna open this two-one, just to verify that what.
When we were doing it before, how come, how come we had to keep taking, remember Travis, when we kept taking? Why, why'd we have to do that before? Remember when we were reading it, and you having Travis read some of the stuff?
Yeah, well, last time I had you guys do this reconciliation sheet.
Right.
And we did it for you this time. So if you wanna look through all of these and see where we were off, you can.
Now you remember that.
Two years in a row.
You did, I just, I said, we'll just fill in the numbers for you, especially since we had to rearrange how we were reading them. Before, it just flowed precinct by precinct, and with this, we couldn't do that.
So which one are you looking at, we have to confirm, right?
Pardon?
We have to read confirm, or you're just?
I am gonna confirm the number, I guess. We can pass this down if you guys wanna see it. That'd be good. And the number in their poll book was thirty-four. Thirty-four and twenty is fifty-four, and that's the number that we, um, tabulated was fifty-four. It was a very small precinct, so that, that one is good.
So Cindy, at the precinct level, there's a lot of reconciliation that the precinct workers have to do. And I can understand how those numbers can get confusing after being there for twelve hours. And you're still, and you're trying to count any spoiled ballots, or you're trying to count ballots that, that were broke open, because they usually come, I think, in packets of like a hundred.
Yes.
And so you have to count the ballots that weren't used out of that packet, et cetera. So it's a long day, and I think it's very easy, uh, for that confusion. But I, I do think that they've done a, a great job in the elections that I've been involved in, in Pennington County, and, and doing that, and.
We have fabulous poll workers, and I agree, after, I mean, we're up at four-thirty, or at least I was up at four-thirty here by six, didn't leave till one. And I wasn't dealing with public and interacting and writing numbers in the poll book and dealing with, like you said, packages, and you have to recount and make sure. And we did find that there were some of our packages of ballots that the printer didn't have the correct number in, so they were having to adjust on that level, too. And it, it isn't easy. I wish we could figure out just a simple worksheet, but no matter how we try and put it together, it just doesn't flow quite right every time.
Can understand.
Yeah, yeah, you guys have done that, you have seen that worksheet.
Yeah, Drew's shamed me into doing it in a couple years. But, but it, it was a good learning experience, I mean, it, I didn't realize the first day that you can't leave, it's twelve hours, you're there.
That's a lockup.
It is. Thought I was in an airport.
Where's NH again? Which one is that one?
My hands.
Oh, hands, gotcha.
Eighteen. Even with that one, eighteen twenty-seven. Minus two is twenty-five, we were still one, one ballot off with that one, which seems kind of odd, but, um, sometimes that's between the absentees and the poll book, so. It does happen that that does not come out perfectly for again. But at least now we have that one recorded. Always, I thought there were only two of them, there's three of them.
One more.
There's one more tab there. See, I thought they had all these in order for me, too, but.
VF has.
Valley fire. So this is the reconciliation sheet that we did.
And that's for FB?
BF, yep. And so this is the poll book that they have everybody sign. When they come in, and they're supposed to transfer that number to their ballot. You know, they're here, to their ballot recap sheet.
Okay.
To this line, but they missed doing that, so we can't open those until the canvas, so.
So that one you just opened, there was a difference of one between that?
And the ballots that we counted.
Okay.
Four thirty-nine is what I count right off. That number here, these two numbers, four thirty-nine.
What's those?
That four fifty, right? So is it plus that one?
Yeah.
So we're at four fifty, if I kept.
I'm like, what'd you find?
Um, I resubmitted it, and it's still showing two twenty-five in the canvas.
Did you verify?
I verified, um, I called Secretary State, she's supposed to call me back to find out why.
Okay.
So, they'll be calling in a few minutes.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I've never had that happen before, it's almost like that provisional, and I know that's the race it was on, it's almost like that provisional, when you entered, it didn't say.
Yeah, I submitted it twice, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never had that happen before.
Is it supposed to be minus nineteen, and then what is it?
Just minus nineteen.
Minus nineteen, so I've got four twenty-one.
Yep, okay.
And then you've got, you're showing four twenty-five.
So there's a difference of four. We can be up to five long, and then we have to start pulling ballots, so.
So this was, uh, the, the vote we're talking about, was it provisional because they had requested a absentee?
No, they showed up at the polls, and they were positive that that's where they should be, and that's where they should vote. And so they voted the provisional based on that. And then when they got, when all of that came back to the office, we'd investigate to find out whether that's correct or not. Was it an error, clerical error on our side? Um, did they actually get put in the wrong precinct? Or was it somebody that registered on the DMV that never came through? So it should've been registered, but it should've been counted, and it was.
Yeah.
The last one, you're three, three off?
Four off.
Four. And you're allowed up to five.
What's that? Okay. While we're waiting for that, if we could move on to the next item, we could do our draw for our, um, post-election audit, if you would like to do that.
We can do that, so let's do the draw.
One statewide and then one, right?
Yes. And so there is only one statewide. So the first thing that we have to do is, oh, let me see, I think we forgot to number these. Nope, I did number them, didn't I? I did number them. All right, so it's the auditor gets to draw.
This is, this is gonna, this is how we select which ones we do, though?
Yep, yep. So we have forty-six precincts, so we have forty-six chips in our bucket. Shake 'em up really good, pick the largest precinct. Yep.
Yeah, who else?
Then we can see who's not biased of any. Yeah, I can blame you.
Twenty-five.
Okay. So we took them. I have all the precincts here, because we also have to know what races are on, in that precinct. So we numbered all of these. So the first precinct that we have is five-five.
How many total are we drawing?
Three.
Twenty-nine.
Trying to figure out a system for all of this for the very first time was.
Yeah.
Kind of a, is this gonna work great, or isn't it gonna work great?
Which number's Penney to?
Fifteen.
So twenty-nine was CL was the second.
Oh, sorry, I didn't say that, did I? And that one is fifteen. That is three-five.
So what do we got? We got three-five.
Three-five.
Five-five and CL.
Okay. Do you wanna number those races, and I'll start pulling out all the jobs. Some of this is hard to do before you actually get here. I need to buy some more of these, so I can have two sets, one for. Sorry, four. No, we wouldn't wanna do that one, since that is automatic. Yeah, the Democratic Presidential is the only race that's statewide, so we would just have the four.
Oh, okay.
One, two, three. Okay, just one second.
So one, two, three, one, two, three, four, and.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, that's all you really need.
Okay, so, here. Dana went up and there was a total, a place where you had to draw the, drag the provisional up. So this is the official canvas at two twenty-six, not two twenty-five.
Okay.
So that is correct. So now.
Press that, or?
Um, if everybody wants to see it, and, well, did you reprint the whole thing?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't. Okay, it was two twenty-five, and now it's two twenty-six. Okay.
So the first one was the Republican Senate District thirty-three, is that what I heard?
You can tick, keep that back there.
Three-five.
Yeah, we know which one that is. And then I left a spot for, if there isn't a statewide contest, then we would have to draw just a regular, a local contest, but since we have that, that will be on that one.
So what's the timeframe that you have to, to do that?
Um, fifteen days, within fifteen days of the canvas.
Okay.
So I'm going to schedule it for the twentieth. If we do have a recount, we do not have to do the post-election audit.
At all?
At all.
Oh, okay.
That's in state statute.
Okay.
Okay, now you have three.
These in green, you're gonna, two, yeah, three. Oh, no, that's really hard to grab those off the bottom, isn't it?
So, so a recount could involve any race that was on the ballot? Okay.
That one, we're doing the delegates to state convention.
Okay.
Delegates to state convention, uh, what is that? Five-five?
Yes.
Do you think he'll submit a recount? Okay. Ron? I feel like I need a smaller box now. With only three of them in there. Have they ever? Have they ever? You got two votes, that'd be crazy. And there is no action that the board needs to take on this.
That's Republican State Senator.
C.L., and the one that was drawn was the Republican State Senator for District thirty-four.
I did create, uh, this form that I'm going to sign to, that'll show what we drew, and then I thought I would have the chair sign it as well. And then, if we go back to the canvas, we do need that motion to approve the canvas.
I'd make that motion.
Say again?
Moved by Drews and seconded by Lassiter to approve the canvas. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then if you would all sign two of the canvases, we keep one for our records, and we will send one to the Secretary of State.
And I don't have any paperwork, uh, and payments for the election.
We will submit those at the next, um, commission meeting with the volunteers. We didn't have time to get those all pulled out of the baskets, and I was about to grab it this morning, and I forgot.
So the selection process is all done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ron, you scrubble worse than I do. I'm trying to see who's worse.
So we don't have anything else after this?
No.
Okay, so we're just, okay. Next on our agenda is items from the public. I don't have any speaker request forms, do we have anybody that wants to speak? Seeing none, I'd go, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Lassiter.
Second.
Second by Hagcock, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Cindy.